Is everybody's mic on? We'll reconvene the Parker Town Council for May 2 at 7:00. Would you please join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, gosh, if I could pull this thing up, I would.
Do you just push it back so I feel bigger? So, tonight in Parker Town Hall is a night for heroes. And as you look around, we have a number of heroes from one of my favorite restaurants, The Tailgate. I had the headwaters back long way, too. So, I'm going to ask the chief and Officer Moreno to come down with me. I'm going to read just a little bit of the scenario first, and then I'm going to pause for a second and have the Tailgate family come down and join us down here on the floor. Because I think, you know, we don't do often a chief's commendation for heroics in the town of Parker, and this is one that is really, really deserving. So, let me take you back to a whole winter night in Parker, November 28, 2021, at 1:44 in the morning. Parker officers responded to the McDonald's if there was a fight in progress. While in route, Parker officers learned that a victim had been stabbed in the neck and walked towards the tailgate bar and tavern in an attempt to get help. Officer Moreno, right here, responded to the tailgate and observed the victim, Jason Clarkin. And I don't think Jason joined us here tonight, but observed him with a knife wound to the left side of his neck. Clarkin was unconscious and breathing and began to turn pale and lose consciousness. But prior to South Metro Fire responding, first aid was rendered by Officer Moreno and a staff member at the tailgate, Brian Caggianno. Later, Officer Moreno sent the following message to the tailgate staff. So, but before you read that, I want the Tailgate family to join us down here. Come on down. Where's Abigail? Where's my helmet? And Spencer was there? So, let's stand, because you guys are big. Let's stand behind the wall. Who's getting the ticket up the way though, me? So, Sergeant Moreno, why don't you recount your events about that? Did I just broke two?
Okay, there you go. First of all, everyone looks really nice, so thank you for showing up. My name's Officer Moreno, graveyard's officer with Parker PD. This is the following email that I sent to John Jordan after the night of the incident. Good afternoon, John. It's Gregory Parker PD. Last night, we had an incident where we had a victim of a stabbing. Somehow, the victim made his way to tailgate in search of help. Your staff observed the male outside and quickly rendered aid. Immediately, your employees applied pressure bandages, Spencer and Brian over here, and assisted me with lifesaving measures. As the victim was going into shock, your employees dressed him with blankets and their own personal jackets. That was specifically the waitresses and bar staff that you see before you. Brian specifically helped me take care of the victim. As a Marine veteran myself, I noticed Brian's training kicked in, and he helped treat the victim just like the military taught him to do so. Spencer was also at Marine Corps as well. We live in a world where people tend to stand and watch. It's refreshing to see your employees step in and help a double human being in crisis. The actions of your staff play a pivotal role in man's survival. I just wanted to take a moment and notify you of this situation, as well as commend your staff who were working at the time of the incident. Thank you. There's also a second part here I'm supposed to read. Duran was the first to respond by grabbing Clarkin, who is Jason, and putting his thumb in the saddling to help stop the bleeding and assess the situation. Brian Caggianno was there, quickly afterward, to help with the bleeding and care of Clarkin by placing gauze in Clarkin's wound, and then had Duran check the rest of Clarkin's torso to make sure there were no other saddlings. Caggianno constructed a tourniquet to help with the bleeding as well. Danny Yarwood, Annie Bennett, Ashley Zeller, Zoe Dirks, Jessica Quante, Joanne Sarmiento George, Justin Hawkes, Dan Graney, and Solomon Holman all assisted Duran and Caggianno with whatever they needed. They brought out blankets and jackets to keep Clarkin warm. They brought out towels to help with the bleeding, plastic and a pen in case Clarkin was having a lung issue from the saddling. Pretty much whatever was asked to do, they assisted. Thanks to the efforts of all persons involved with lifesaving measures and their outstanding service to the officers on scene, Clarkin was able to be transported to Parker Venice Hospital, where he was tended to by medical staff.
That's pretty phenomenal. So, Brian and Spencer, come up just for a second before the chief starts his. So, take us back to that night. I mean, it's a little talk show right now, but you know, but take us back to that night. Like, it's almost 2:00, you're ready to go, right? You hear the knock on the door. What goes through your mind? It's the mayor again? We don't want to answer.
No, I won't say exactly what it was, but like, oh, no, it's just another drunk guy that was afraid to drink after work. And then, so I walked up, and at first, I thought it was just a random drunk guy, so I just walked away. And then, I think it was Annie screamed that he was bleeding. I don't think he had a red shirt on.
Yeah.
So, you can claim that it was either me, just I'm ready to go home or whatnot, but he's bleeding like hurt bad, and Spencer ran out loud into the kitchen to makeshift tourniquet and towels.
Amazing. Spencer, what was going through your mind as you're with them while Brian leaves you?
Yeah, so, I mean, just training kicks in. I mean, shirt's bleeding red, pouring blood out of his neck. Take his shirt off. I initially thought it was a second chest wound, so I asked the staff to give me a pen and plastic and stuff I need to do to address a second chest wound. Luckily, it wasn't. So, yeah, I know, just assess situation. I knew that it was probably an arterial wound, so found out the neck artery and just applied as much pressure I could so I could get him to out. And shortly after, Officer Moreno showed up.
Wow, amazing. Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you to acknowledge these heroes amongst us.
Well, thank you, Mary. Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk about what the chief's commendation is. According to our policy and why we issue the chief's commendation to assist, as well as our staff. So, the chief's commendation is awarded to someone who demonstrates selfless conduct during a time of crisis or emergency, or attempts to save the life of another involving one of the learned life support processes such as mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, CPR, the use of an AED, the Heimlich maneuver for choking victims, or the control of severe bleeding. This evening's recipients meet these criteria, and we gratefully thank them for their selfless actions in assisting our officers, which ultimately saved Mr. Clarkin's life. Along with your certificates is a chief's challenge coin and an department challenge coin. And just a little brief history of the challenge coin. A challenge coin is said to have begun during the Roman Empire. Soldiers were rewarded with coins to recognize their achievements. The use of the challenge coins has prevailed even in modern times with coins being awarded to commemorate special events or actions such as in this case. I'm honored as the chief of police to share a coin with all of you this evening for the roles that it teaches played in saving the lives of these. Congratulations and thank you for everything.
Deputy here, Abigail, is going to help me. The chief's going to present them, and Abigail can take them?
Sure.
Yeah, you can. Go back and stand there when you can.
Brian. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Spencer. Annie. Ashley. Dan. Saul. Jessica. Danny. She's not here. Somebody has to be working.
Somebody's got to be working.
Everybody falls Saul in that with all his coins.
Yes. Just as I knew you'd be here. Zoe. Zoe, congratulations. Thank you.
All right, let's give them one more round of applause. Behind us, these two come right in the middle here. Abigail, you stand there.
We can't just have girls.
Put your certificates. For the picture. Okay, so, let's look at the red phone first, and then we'll get the other one. I don't know if somebody's looking everywhere.
Give them more time to charge.
All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Perfect guy to have on the streets with you.
There you go.
All right, thank you again, Tailgate family for being here. Brian, Spencer, all of you. Amazing, you're who I want by my side if I get into trouble. All right, next up is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of our meeting. With each individual allowed three minutes to speak. Signups were taken in the beginning. We have not received any emails. You're scaring me here. We have not received any emails regarding that. And Chris, do we have anybody on Zoom for public comment?
Is there anyone in Zoom who wishes to make a general public comment? Please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay. So, with that in the room, we have Cory Nelson. Mr. Nelson? If you will state your name and address for the record, and I'll give you your three minutes.
Great. Hello, my name is Cory Nelson. My address is 21398 East Wanderlust Place in Parker, the lovely Idowile development.
There you go.
Okay. Hi, folks. And some of you may know me as a Parker resident, some of you as a neighbor. I also am a candidate for the office of the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder. I do have a primary coming up June 28, and we do have a Democrat opponent coming in who already, Janet Griswold, our Secretary of State, is supporting. Interesting enough, pushing the idea that our school board elections are something that they're interested in watching or maybe controlling. So, it'll be an interesting June and then possibly into November. To a couple of things, when I've talked an awful lot about the idea of bringing an army helicopter in for Parker Day as a stag display, thanks for your help and direction. I'll work with Michelle and the chief and the chamber of conference to try and see if we can make that happen. I also briefly want to comment, I saw in the Parker newsletter about the police department having a drone program. I want to support that. When I was the chair of the Public Safety Advisory Committee of the Sheriff's Office, we had a whole project on a drone program. We had multiple public hearings. Came up with a 68-page report on advising the sheriff's department to not only to develop one, but some advice on how to utilize it to make sure for those people who are concerned about privacy issues to address that. And I'll send a copy of that to the chief for that issue. I also want to quickly mention on the press with the sidewalk issue coming on Parker Road that I have some initial questions about, looking good. Love the fence. How can we get that on Hilltop, Joshua? Can we get that, too? Because I'd love to have some noise mitigation along for all the increase in road traffic on Hilltop. So, maybe we can work out something along from fences along there as well for noise protection. So, hello, thanks very much for all you're doing. Have a great night, and then thanks for listening.
Great. Thanks, sir.
Good night, Cory.
All right, next up is report items and comments from mayor and council. We will start to my right, Councilmember Pogue.
Oh, I haven't had a lot of meetings outside. I've had some meetings here at Town Hall, in particular today, met with some of the zoning and planning and community development staff regarding some future contracting issues. But also, we had a meeting that was called up, not sure who called it, Anne is the representative to the Douglas County Housing Partnership, and they have a new director there. And so, the goal was to orient her to what Parker really is and has to offer. That's about it.
Excellent. Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you. I had the honor of attending the groundbreaking for the Casserac Public Library. Casserac is the last of what we call probably the Big Four to get a new library. Lowentree, Castle Mines, Parker, and now Casserac are having a new run at libraries. And they had groundbreaking today. I think the interesting case to point out, as a member of the library district, is that they've done these Big Four with cash, cash reserves and a cash improvement plan, not going out to debt and not going out to debt to build buildings, I think, is the future. And I look forward to doing that here in the town of Parker also. So, well done by the district, well done by the trustees over the years, and I'm glad for Casserac. I'm also glad we were before Casserac.
Excellent. Councilman Dyak.
Thank you very much. On the 20th, I had a Dr. Cog board meeting. We largely dealt with state legislative bill issues pertaining to the Dr. Cog services. We also had some informational briefings on air pollution, as well as the metro vision, which is the overall regional plan regarding performance measure status update. I also sent an email regarding summaries to the individual elected leaders here as well to kind of give them a update from a staff perspective. On the 22nd, I participated in the Earth Day event at Parker Core Knowledge. Those festivities were largely in the morning. Got a chance to go around to classes and take a look and see how all the community people rallied around to create some great presentations. And I dealt with Drew and Laura Malatesta. They were sort of my point people. They can, if they were up here, they probably indicated that there are a large amount of people behind them and alongside of them that made this a success for the kiddos. 26, I had an E470 leadership transition meeting with the outgoing executive director, the incoming executive director, and general counsel, just discussing transition matters. The 27th, I had a Dr. Cog awards ceremony at Mile High. This is where we usually recognize one person for their historical contributions to the region. We did not do that this year. In exchange for that, we honor the many individuals who selflessly gave themselves to care for the aging during this pandemic. And there were people across all counties who did that. So, it was fantastic to put names and faces to those people who went out to help our aging community. The 28th, I had an E470 finance meeting. We had an audit briefing. Got a copy of the audit here, E470, clean audit, and we also did a large-scale overview on contracts. And just an FYI, on the 25th, construction began on the High Plains Trail. That was a project that started here in the town of Parker. We, along with a former employee, Dennis Trapp, and Mr. Chris Hudson, the person who coined the term a United Nation of Trails, that was started here on the 25th, and completion is expected in the fall of 2020. That is all, Mayor.
Excellent. Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you. So, on May 20th, I had a meeting with two women from the chamber, and then on the 28th, we had a board meeting for the Douglas County Housing Partnership. And also on the 28th, we, several of us, attended the Downtown Business Alliance gathering. And then today, as Councilmember Pogue mentioned, we met with the new director of the Douglas County Housing Partnership, and Mr. Matthews gave her a tour of some projects going on here in Parker. Thank you, that's all.
Excellent. Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, about a week ago, we had an awards ceremony put on by the 18th Judicial District for Victims Rights Week, and that was chaired by John Kelner. Our own Amanda Hollander was awarded the Outstanding Law Enforcement Victim Advocate for 2022, and she was nominated by Detective Shannon Brubaker, and she was selected because of her outstanding and exceptional work with victims. And I'd also like to note that Melissa Mattson is also a victim advocate in that office. And other than that, I had a lovely trip to Arizona to rest. Thank you.
Great. Just a couple of things for me. Attended the ribbon cutting for the newest juice store here, Robex, last Sunday. One thing that Cheryl, Pogue, and I both attended, I attended for Chaparral, but was the Parker Steak and the South Parker Steak, as the LDS Church honored Chaparral teachers, ponderosa, and legend teachers. So, we split the duties up for that, and that was a great time. I know Cheryl had a great time, and they loved you down there, so I don't think I'm invited back next time. They want you.
I told them you couldn't come.
Yeah, they want you now, so. But just so everybody has on their calendar, May 12th, we've been heads down here working on the mayor's State of the Town address, I'm sorry, the State of the Town address with Rotary Club. And May 12th, 7:30 in the morning, lasting until about 9:00, 9:30, free breakfast, so sign up online. It's going to be a great event, and I think, Beau, let me know, we're almost sold out on it of the free thing, so it's always good. All right, with that, we will go over to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for an individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introductory only and will not be removed for discussion. So, council, you have items 5A through 5H for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5H, please.
Second.
That motion was made by Councilwoman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks is absent. Dyak?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Next item up is our first public hearing for tonight. It's on ordinance number 3.213.7 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend the Cottonwood Highlands Development Plan and Guide and the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. So, we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing at 7:24. Stacy, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. So, tonight, we will be discussing an amendment to the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development. All right, so the subject site is located at the southeast corner of Jordan Road and Parker House Road. The applicant has admitted a plan development amendment to rezone a portion of the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development to allow for a church. The property was annexed and zoned as part of the greater 201.7 acre Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development in 2003. At the time of the original zoning, the subject site was zoned highway commercial. Within the PD, the highway commercial land use designation was intended to provide destination retail and commercial uses along the E470 corridor. The subject property has been zoned commercial since the incorporation into the town in 2003. So, tonight, the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately 14.5 acres located at the southeast corner of Jordan Road and Parker House Road, from highway commercial into two separate planning areas. The first planning area, which is Planning Area 7, will consist of approximately 9.1 acres, or 62.7% of the property, and that will be zoned retail to allow for specific retail uses. The second planning area, which is Planning Area 8, will consist of approximately 5.4 acres, which is 37.3% of the site, and will be zoned assembly and will allow for a church along with other assembly uses. The subject property is located within the E470 mixed-use character area of the town. This area is intended to serve the needs of the residents with a mix of land uses and public amenities. The proposed rezoning will reduce the types of permitted uses to focus on those compatible land uses designed to meet the needs of the surrounding community and residents. The requested zoning is consistent with the specific goals and strategies of the master plan for the following reasons. The request would expand the town's economic base in an area that is designated for commercial uses and is zoned for commercial purposes. The request would provide for expanded commercial activities in an area designated for commercial So, there are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria ensure that a need exists, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, adequate circulation exists, and will not be detrimental to the town. After evaluating the information provided by the applicant for the rezoning, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth within the land development ordinance. In addition to the nine criteria for rezoning, staff has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, all noticing requirements have been satisfied, and the planning commission heard this application on April 14, 2022, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend town council approve the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development Amendment. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant Brett Harrington is here tonight and also has a presentation for you.
Excellent. Thanks, Stacy. We will go to staff questions. We will start with Councilmember Hefta. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I do. So, this group in the past had a history of developing commercial under the wing of religion, and therefore not tax-producing. Is that their plan for what's going to be zoned commercial, or is it going to be tax-producing commercial?
Councilwoman Pogue, why don't we hold off on that and let the applicant have the presentation? We can ask that directly.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
For staff?
Yeah, real quick, for staff currently...
The subject property has been zoned commercial since incorporation into the town in 2003. So tonight, the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately 14.5 acres located at the southeast corner of Jordan Road and Parker House Road from highway commercial into two separate planning areas. The first planning area, which is Planning Area 7, will consist of approximately 9.1 acres or 62.7% of the property, and that will be zoned retail to allow for specific retail uses. The second planning area, which is Planning Area 8, will consist of approximately 5.4 acres, which is 37.3% of the site, and will be zoned assembly and will allow for a church along with other assembly uses. The subject property is located within the E-470 mixed-use character area of the town. This area is intended to serve the needs of the residents with a mix of land uses and public amenities. The proposed rezoning will reduce the types of permitted uses to focus on those compatible land uses designed to meet the needs of the surrounding community and residents. The requested zoning is consistent with the specific goals and strategies of the master plan for the following reasons. The request would expand the town's economic base in an area that is designated for commercial uses and is zoned for commercial purposes. The request would provide for expanded commercial activities in an area designated for commercial So there are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria ensure that a need exists, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, adequate circulation exists, and will not be detrimental to the town. After evaluating the information provided by the applicant for the rezoning, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth within the land development ordinance. In addition to the nine criteria for rezoning, staff has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, all noticing requirements have been satisfied, and the planning commission heard this application on April 14th, 2022, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend town council approve the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development Amendment. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant Brett Harrington is here tonight and also has a presentation for you.
Excellent. Thanks, Stacy. We will go to staff questions. We will start with Councilmember Hefta. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I do. So this group in the past had a history of developing commercial under the wing of religion and therefore not tax-producing. Is that their plan for what's going to be zoned commercial, or is it going to be tax-producing commercial?
Councilwoman Pogue, why don't we hold off on that and let the applicant have his presentation? We can ask that directly if he has.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
For staff? Councilman Rivero, anything for staff?
Yeah, real quick, for staff currently, is there a height restriction on this property at all?
There is. So under the highway commercial, the existing height restriction is 75 feet, and it can go up to 90 with a use by special review. The proposal is to reduce that down to 60 feet.
So with this amendment, part of that proposal would reduce it from a possible 90 to 60 stagnant, done?
Correct. Yes, and there's also some wording in here, if you're adjacent to residential, it goes down to 35 feet within 200 feet of that residential planning area.
And that's existing before the amendment, or that's in the amendment itself?
That's new with this amendment, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Any other questions for staff? Stacy, do you want to introduce the applicant and have them come up?
Yes, we will have Brett Harrington come on up.
Great. Come on up, sir. If you will give your name and address for the record, you get 30 minutes for your presentation, but I'm not going to set the timer. I'm going to let you be on your honor system, right, so.
Very good.
But go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Brett Harrington, and I lead real estate development for Life Church. Address 4600 East Second Street, Edmond, Oklahoma. What I would love to do tonight is just take a quick minute to introduce you to who Life Church is, and then speak a little further about what our vision is for this development. So first of all, the church is based in Oklahoma, and it's led by Senior Pastor Craig Rochelle. And while it is in Oklahoma, we have 42 locations in 12 states. And that sounds like a huge church, but trust me, every single campus is intimately engaged in making the community that it's part of a better community in whatever way we can. And that happens at a community level in many ways, but also at the individual level because our purpose is to meet people's spiritual needs, relational, emotional, provide a spot for community, all those things that a church is so uniquely positioned to do. But what's exciting about this site is that it provides a special opportunity as well to meet the needs of the residents of Parker on a more holistic level. And so to explain what I mean by that, the town of Parker has a vision for the future that is very foundational to who you are, focused on family and community, and being outside, staying healthy, and appreciation for arts and culture. And we really believe this development is going to come alongside what's already happening and just add fuel to that fire. And we picture this development being a place where families can go out to dinner on a Friday night, dads can take their daughters out for an ice cream date, families can gather on the lawn and play yard games or listen to live music, but also a spot where they can get their needs met and buy yoga pants or clothes for their kids or a biscuit for their dog at the bakery. So we see this development meeting all of those needs on a more holistic level, and people will come here for church and they'll come here for all these other needs seven days a week as well. So I would love to show you just a few slides that cast a little bit of vision for the development itself. On the first image, you can see a site concept that shows what we're picturing. You can see where the church is located in the lower right portion of the property, which is a difficult spot for a retail tenant to be landed, but for a church being a destination use, we're extremely excited about that spot. And then the remainder of the development is made up of approximately 35 tenant spaces surrounding a common green space area. And that green space area is really the hub of the development. It's got a lot of activation points that we're picturing, like pop jet fountains or a playground or possibly a fire pit, all of it with this retail and dining mix centered around it. Then on the next slide, you can see we've got an image of the church from, obviously we'll have a parking lot entrance or an entrance on the back of the building to our main parking lot, but there'll also be an entrance that fronts the development and helps to connect the church to everything going on within the development itself. The following slide gives a little bit of a vision for how some of the architecture may look on the main street that goes through the development, a little bit of the styling we're picturing. And then the final slide gives a visual for how that green space could be activated for people to be able to use it for all those amenities I described before. So that's what I wanted to share, and we do have our civil consultant here as well, Dan Skeehan with Kimley Horn. So both he and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thanks, sir. And you know, we have one question from Councilmember Pogue cut it your way, so we'll start with Councilmember Pogue to my right.
Yeah, this site was designed for commercial to meet the commercial needs of the surrounding area.
Yes, ma'am.
And also revenue-producing for the town.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain how that's going to occur with your proposal, please.
The site is an interesting shape, and so for most retail uses that would generate the kind of tax you're talking about, it's a tricky balance because of the size and configuration of the land. And so the way that we're using this site, we believe, takes away the difficult spot that would have a hard time generating revenue and maximizes the remaining portion for that 62% approximately that would be generating tax revenue for the town.
So it would not fall under a religious designation, it would stay as a commercial?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Rivero?
Questions?
Okay, Councilman Diak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, if you mentioned there's 12, how many other churches?
Forty-two, actually.
Forty, sorry.
In 12 states.
In 12 states.
Yes.
So do any of the other ones have this, a concept that's similar to this?
Not specifically like this where we're developing it. There are many of our locations that are in retail developments, strip centers, there are others where we have developed what would be considered a more traditional retail development with pad sites, but not in this configuration where you bring that holistic benefit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, did you mention how many retail sites you were envisioning on this area?
This particular development, we currently have 35 tenant spaces planned that are going to be a mixture of retail and dining venues. We don't have the specific breakdown as to how many of each. That'll come to a certain degree in the site plan and the architectural process as we commence.
And then you were also envisioning a playground, a fire pit, some picnic areas, that type of thing, probably in front of the church or on that church property?
No, actually, we are envisioning those items as ways to activate the green space, but they would not be on the church property. They would be actually at the hub of the development itself is the way we're currently planning it.
With the playground?
We were calling it a treehouse is kind of the idea. It's all conceptual at this point, but we are looking for some element of a kids' play area, some element of a fountain area, perhaps a fire pit, all those things that are just going to bring people to the community gathering spot.
And then how about your parking spaces for the retail and the church area?
We currently have a master plan developed in conceptual phase that houses all the parking we need for the church on the assembly side of the zoning category, and then appropriate parking per Parker zoning ordinances for the remaining retail and dining on the remainder of the site.
And then, what's the capacity of the church?
It is an auditorium of 750 seats.
And do you also envision unique services with your particular church that maybe some of the other Christian non-denominational churches don't have in town?
Not sure what you mean by unique services.
It's a Christian non-denominational church, correct?
It is part of the actual covenant denomination is the official denomination we're part of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It is a part of the evangelical church, yes.
Okay, it's part of the covenant denomination. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
All right, no problem.
Great, no. No, and that explains a lot, and I'm sure you'll have many of those traditional services offered, life groups.
Correct.
Different types of outreach programs.
Absolutely.
To the community as well, correct?
Absolutely. We're heavily engaged in the communities we're a part of.
Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Council, any other questions? Okay, with that, we're going to open up for public comment at 7:36. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. 7:36, anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on this ordinance? Come on down. Seeing none in the room. Chris, do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, there's a couple.
Okay. All right, if you will, is that Anna Lafferty?
Yes. Do I hit join as a panelist?
We're hearing you. So if you will state your name and address for the record, I will give you your three minutes and let you know when you're just about done.
Okay, thank you. I lost you all. It's weird to talk without seeing you. Can I click join as a panelist?
We got you. Go ahead, Anna, if you'll just.
Okay, now I see you. I don't want to talk to, I'm talking to a blank screen now. Anyway, thank you. I really appreciate your time. My name is Anna Lafferty. My address is 9047 Apache Plume Drive, Unit C in Parker. And I'm relieved to hear about these height, the height situation being changed. I feel really good about that. Very concerned about the volume of people that are going to be coming there constantly on two respects. One is, right now, to try to make a left from Parker House Road to, onto Jordan's impossible during busy times, so I think a light needs to be installed there. But my bigger concern is I live on Apache Plume Drive, and I'm afraid that all these extra people coming to that area are going to start coming down Apache Plume Drive to Cottonwood. And the planner at, for Parker, who was helping me, has been very nice and educating me. I'm not used to actually speaking in situations like this, so I appreciate you bearing with me. And so I reached out to Douglas County because apparently we're an incorporated Douglas County, and I was told Apache Plume Drive is a private road and they can't do anything. But my wish would be, if you're going to allow this kind of development with that many people coming and going all the time, just to keep the safety of our children here and the quiet use of our streets and neighborhood, is to add speed cushions or something like that. I realize that you need to coordinate that with an HOA and there are regulations and that sort of thing, but from what I understand, speed cushions are less of a problem for emergency vehicles and the like. So I think they sound like they're going to be a really good neighbor, but all those pictures, there were a lot of people all the time, and we have a really quiet neighborhood at this point, so I'm a little, and an auditorium, auditorium can't talk, seeing 700 people has me very concerned about people coming and going and using our street, especially since Cottonwood's been expanded to a four lane. And there's a lot of speeding that goes on this, in the area now, a lot of people running red lights. So that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, anyone else on, for public comment?
He just dropped off.
There, he just popped up on the screen there. Mr. Ramsey, are you on? Okay, Chris, anybody else?
If there's anyone else that wishes to make a public comment at this time on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are, Mr. Ramsey.
Sorry.
That's okay. If you will state your name and address for the record, and then I will start your three-minute timer.
Okay, very good. My name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live in 3862 Elm Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134.
Great, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I say to Life Church, welcome in Parker. Good neighbors are always welcome. I've lived in the Parker area since the 1980s. Now, population is growing extremely fast. You know, Parker used to have extensive prairie wildlife, and prairie wildlife is still cherished by most Parker residents. The Parker 2035 Master Plan, Chapter 12, details protections for Parker Wildlife Habitat and for Parker Wildlife. There are county and state guidelines for wildlife, too. Citizen surveys published in the Parker Talk of the Town paper verify that wildlife habitat and prairie wildlife are still high priorities in Parker, but there is a long list of missed opportunities to help Parker Wildlife. The town of Parker has killed many prairie dogs and converted their lands to other uses. So where can a hawk, an owl, or a fox go to get a poison-free meal? I think Parker can do better. Climate change, droughts, fires, lost habitats, species extinction are all closing in on all birds, wildlife, and insects. You know, the town of Parker has given away land. Parker can give away land for Parker Prairie Wildlife Habitat? I think creating a Parker Prairie Dog Park would provide a reliable and safe source of food and shelter for Parker Wildlife. Local citizens and I are working hard with the Prairie Protection Colorado nonprofit to secure a relocation site for the prairie dogs that are on this site and others. The paperwork has been submitted, and the approval is expected by the end of this month. I appreciate your help and your cooperation with saving Parker Wildlife Habitat, saving Parker Wildlife, and especially saving Parker's keystone species, prairie dogs. All efforts to protect prairie dogs are welcome. While opinions vary, the facts about prairie dogs remain the same. As a keystone species, prairie dogs are the most important and most mistreated wildlife species in Colorado. Why do we continue to allow Colorado prairie dogs to be killed so often and in such horrific ways? The definition of evil is the absence of empathy. Empathy is essential for our wildlife and for our own future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Chris, anyone else online?
If there's anyone else in Zoom that wishes to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, then we will close public hearing, I'm sorry, close public comment, 7:43. Mr. Harrington, we always give the applicant a chance to, after a public comment, to make any other statement you wish on the topic, so if there's any of those two items you wanted to address, happy to afford you back some of your 30 minutes.
I'll be brief, but to the comment about the traffic, we're happy to work on any options we can come up with to make ourselves be the best neighbors possible as we get into the site plan review process. We'll talk with the staff about that. And then we have already begun the prairie dog relocation with that volunteer group that Mr. Ramsey mentioned, so we're working on that as well.
Excellent.
That was it.
Thank you for that. Stacy?
Yes, and I would just like to say that Chris Hudson informed me that the traffic signal there at Parker House Road and Jordan House has gone out for bid, so it is coming.
Okay.
So it will help with the traffic problems.
Excellent, good point. All right, with that, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:44 and bring it back to the council for our comments, debate on the ordinance 3.213.7. I'm going to start off with Councilman Diak.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the applicant coming before us. As our city, I'm sorry, as our town, why did I say that, Josh? As our town continues to go towards full build-out, there are some challenges, and you hear in different areas that there may not be availability. And one case that has been a theme in my almost 10 years up here is how do we find a place to congregate when it comes to a church site? It becomes very challenging. Your firm, your organization, has taken something of a potential negative and found a way to make it a positive and work hand-in-hand with the town to try to figure out how we can both get what we want. And, you know, I think the high-level concepts are very interesting, something very unique that I've never seen. A true partnership or a gathering place in front of a place of worship is, it seems kind of logical. Where I came from, I was born back in the Northeast, and there always seemed to be lots of passive park space and places where the community would just go because that's where you went. And this is sort of a, kind of a modern throwback, if you will, at least in my eyes, as to how can we find places to bring our families and our friends together? And, you know, I think it makes all the sense in the world. So with that, I believe I'm supportive of this idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, one of the reasons I wanted to ask if you'd seen success with this with any of your other developments is I think it's a really interesting concept and its own ecosystem, if you will. I know after church, oftentimes I want to go to breakfast or lunch, and it's kind of built right in there for you, so I think this is consistent with the town's approval criteria for rezoning, and I'm also supportive of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I just want to note for the record that the zoning, original zoning criteria was established in 2001, and so we're now in 2022. And that is, has been, that corner, as you stated, is somewhat a difficult place to put a retail piece of property. And so I just want to say I appreciate your organization working with our very dedicated town staff to come to a resolution on how this development in this retail center with the church included can be a win-win for the town of Parker and for your organization. the church included can be a win-win for the town of Parker and for your organization. And the planning commission provided a very detailed report on the nine criteria of Title 13.0.24F, the approval consideration for rezoning requests. And it does appear that you've met all of those nine criteria in accordance with that ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I want to thank you for participating with our local wildlife group. To many and almost all Parker residents, preservation of wildlife and preserving their habitat is extremely important. And I think you've taken a step forward by working with this group, and hopefully you'll be able to come to a completion of removal and transplanting those little critters without going through the lethal route. So thank you.
And Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Harrington for your presentation. I do appreciate it. I will point out that what's in front of this council tonight is not, you know, a church. It's not how wonderful your organization is, it's simply an assemblage use allowed on a commercial piece of property. What you have done and what you have shown is willingness to work with our staff to allow us to preserve a remitter of our sales tax and allow us to benefit, you know, our citizens with those dollars we need for our police force, our parks, and whatnot, and preserve those hard corners, as Councilman Dyak alluded to. So what I'm weighing tonight and what's in front of me is whether or not that assemblage use will hurt our citizens in the future. I love this chair. And from what I can find tonight, I don't think it will. I think that what we've reached here is a partnership, and I appreciate you willing to work with us. There is that scary term because Dyak has referred to it. You know, we do, you know, have churches that do take up prime pieces, and you're willing to identify that. And your assemblage use, I believe, you know, will benefit our community and, you know, give our citizens another option. Specifically, I identified to, Councilwoman Hefta identified the same one, I believe, in the nine criteria, criteria four, there has been significant changes to the area to warrant the zone change. As stated, the staff analysis, it has changed and it is mostly built out. Allowing assemblage use off of the hard corner also allows us to better protect the remaining property for true commercial use. And item six, I found stood out to me, criteria six, excuse me, additional municipal services will not be incurred. Assemblage use can cause traffic blooms, and my finding, assemblage use can cause traffic blooms. And at the time of the site plan, a detailed traffic plan will be taken place, any additional needed improvements will fall truly on the applicant and the applicant only. So I don't believe that that is an undue burden to the citizens. I, in my opinion, I find the proposed development plan is consistent with the town's master plan, and the application has demonstrated compliance with the applicable approval criteria for the land development ordinance. Thank you for partnering with the town of Parker. Appreciate it, and hopefully you set a goal for other partners in our community. Thank you.
Great, so council, with that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.213.7.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.213.7 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is ordinance number 9.328.1 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas regarding cost sharing for the Lincoln Avenue-Jordan to Parker Road project. Do we have Mr. Ekstrom here with us?
Yeah. Have you got the PowerPoint?
You're not where you're, wait, go ahead.
I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to load. Should be in the public folder. If you don't have it, I've got it here in printout. All right.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. My name is Bob Ekstrom. I'm a project manager in the CIP Division. And tonight, I'm here to present an ordinance for a First Amendment to the IGA for the Lincoln Avenue Widening Project. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the ordinance is to approve the First Amendment to the IGA with Doug Co. for the advancement of design efforts related to the Lincoln Avenue Widening Project. The amendment is needed to formalize negotiations.
Can you pull the microphone up closer?
Yeah, I've only got half a voice tonight, so.
That's okay.
I apologize. So the amendment is needed to formalize negotiations and jointly fund the continuing design effort. Doug Co. and the town have budgeted $500,000 each for a total of $1 million to fund the next round of design services. Next slide. So here's just a quick vicinity map of the project. The limits are, extend between Jordan Road and Parker Road. So a little background, the project scope includes widening the existing four-lane section to a six-lane section, including the widening of four bridge structures between Jordan Road and Parker Road. Town Council and Doug Co. approved the original IGA in May of '21, including a 250K from each agency for a total of $500,000 for concept and preliminary design services. FHU is the consultant currently working on the preliminary design. And the First Amendment funds the next round of design services through final design. Construction is anticipated for the first half of '24 and will continue into '25, requiring a future IGA amendment or new IGA to finalize construction funding. So with that, an ordinance is required to approve this IGA amendment, and staff recommends approval. Open it up for any questions.
Great, council, we'll go for staff questions on this. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes. So you said construction is going to commence in the first half of 2024 and continue into 2025. Do you have an end date for that project?
We don't yet. We're just, we're just coming out of concept design right now, and so we need a little bit more line work, I think, to really define the project, to define the schedule better. So that's a rough target. I think it'll fall in that range. And as the design gets more complete, we'll have a more polished finish date for you.
Rough, I guess, I mean, is about two years, would you say?
You're talking construction, is that?
Completion.
Pardon?
Completion.
Completion, so '25, it'd be like fall of '25, fall/winter of '25, something like that.
And so that'll go on for a little while, and widening that road, lane closures, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. But overall, the concept is better traffic flow on Lincoln Avenue.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions at this time.
All right. Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I do have a question, and that relates to the funding of the final construction. Do you anticipate that Douglas County will remain a 50-50 partner on that phase?
I believe so. I don't think we have anything in writing yet, but I don't know, Chris, maybe you're better first to answer that.
We've been talking to Douglas County about 50-50, but I will tell you that nothing's final, one year at a time budget, and they haven't got to their '24 budget yet, so.
Well, neither have we, but.
Correct, but we've been talking to them about 50-50.
I'm just wondering if they are anticipating that kind of partnership.
That's what we're hoping.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate Councilmember Pogue's question. Once a project is to this level, if you will, and has Douglas County ever backed out? I mean, we're working together in this, and we kind of continue this project as we finish out, correct?
That's what we anticipate, yeah.
Yes, it's not anything, I mean, we start this project down the road, we all have annual budgets, and unfortunately, we can't, you know, obligate future councils to monies, so each one has to be done every year, correct? Yeah, okay. I just noticed something on one of your bullet points, that under FHU's bullet point, you said performance exceeding expectations, is that anything you care to share with us? You skipped over that, it caught my eye.
I might have missed that. Yeah, FHU has done an outstanding job and recommend continuing with their services, and that's what this IGA will do.
Perfect, I appreciate hearing this. Can you talk a little bit about, so six lanes over a existing bridge that has four lanes on it currently? Will lose pedestrian access on that, but we'll gain it, how?
So the, so the bridges are going to be widened to accommodate additional sidewalk.
Okay.
So, so there'll be an additional lane plus sidewalk.
Okay.
I think it's 10-foot is what we're, isn't that what we're concepting, Chris, 10-foot sidewalk?
Yeah, so right now, the concept, and that's exactly where we're at, we're still in the concept phase. And this amendment might be a little early, but Douglas County was willing to step up and said they wanted to get it done, so here we are. 10-foot sidewalks, 14-foot across the bridge because it's constrained on both sides with railing.
Okay. So 10-foot sidewalk considered trail and multimodal use for bicycles?
Correct. I mean, that's the way the federal government looks at a 10-foot wide sidewalk to some, multi-use trails to others, whatever you want to call it, it could be used by lots of people.
As a cyclist, you know, obviously that is a road that is not ridden, it's a posted speed limit of 40, which is laughable, because we know it's much faster there and it's very pinched as it is. I just want, you know, want to ensure that as we go forward, we're thinking of, you know, other users also.
We're doing a balanced approach. I wish we could accommodate everybody and everything, but we're trying to find the balance on the budget. Some people would want even wider sidewalks, even wider lanes on the bridge. Again, we have to find that right balance, Josh.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you both, appreciate it.
All right, so we're going to open up for public comment at 8 o'clock. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on this? Seeing none, Chris, do we have anyone online?
If there's anyone in, on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close the public comment at 8:01, bring it back to the council in the same order. I'll start with Councilmember Barrington.
Anything to help reduce congestion? I think I'm all for that, and this, again, seems to align with the town's strategic goals to innovate with collaborative governance. And I, I look forward to, not the construction, but the outcome.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, appreciate the cooperation with Douglas County in coming to an agreement with this and hopefully future cooperation so that every year we can indeed get the funding necessary for this lane widening. Thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. To me, this is one of, one of a couple of projects, quite honestly, that was talked about with Douglas County at a very high level, when Douglas County reallocated and extended the 1A, with the 1A initiative. The county, the commissioners have been great partners of not only Parker, but all the other municipalities within Douglas County with respect to transportation. Transportation is one of the, one of the county's key goals, and they, the commissioners have made a consistent effort to improve transportation around our county. So with that, you know, again, Douglas County has been a great partner on this project and the next item as well. I can only envision that continuing here into the future. Obviously, black swan things happen to county and to town, but all things being equal, I see, I see no reason why the momentum and the equality of contribution should not continue. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
All right, Councilman Rivera?
No, thank you. A second, what Councilman Dyak and Councilwoman Hefta said, the partnership is amazing. As Councilman Dyak stated, this has been on the radar for quite some time, and I know that Chris has had this on his menu for forever. It's a, it's a hard one, or it has been a hard one. It's part of the county that touches our edge, and then we get part of the road, and then, so it's just been a long, ongoing negotiation. I'm very, very happy for the work you've done, and it's just absolutely amazing, the partnership between the county and the town these days, and I thank you for sticking with it. It will only, as Councilwoman Barrington stated, it'll only improve circulation, and the benefit is far exceeding the nightmares of the traffic that will be caused by it for a short amount of time, in my opinion. So well done to everybody in this, on this job.
Great, and with that, we will entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.328.1.
I move to approve ordinance 9.328.1 on second reading.
I'll second.
Let's see, motion is made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Barrington, Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is ordinance number 9.334 on second reading. There's been a request made to continue this to a date certain of August 1st, 2022, so I'll need a motion for that.
Still moved?
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Councilwoman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Item number eight resolutions is Resolution Number 22-018, a resolution to determine, upon recommendation of the town administrator, that the public interest will be served by competitive proposal concerning the town hall expansion project. Mr. Ekstrom, you're still up.
So this is just a follow-up to the study session last Monday night. So I'm here to present the resolution for alternative contracting methods, and this relates to the town hall expansion project. So Parker Municipal Code 11.13 allows engineering staff to utilize alternative contracting methods for capital improvement projects with town council's permission. Due to the size and complexity of the town hall expansion project, staff recommends using the following alternative contracting methods. Competitive proposal as the contractor selection method, construction manager general contractor as the project delivery method, and cost plus fee with the guaranteed maximum price as the contractor compensation method. All three methods were successfully used on the Fieldhouse, Police Station, PACE, Peewalk, Rec Center, and Discovery Park projects, and all methods are industry standard for this type of project. So how does it work? Step one, select an architect and contractor using the competitive proposal method. Step two is design and budget project. So during design, the contractor undertakes the role of the construction manager, providing pre-construction services like quality, scope, cost, and schedule control. Staff architect and contractor work as a team to optimize program budget and schedule. Step three, prepare the GMP. So after the design is complete, the contractor bids the sub-p packages and prepares a final GMP proposal. If the staff approves the proposal, the GMP is presented to town council for approval via amendment to the contract. And step four, construct the project. So during constructing, the contractor undertakes the role of the general contractor managing the construction process and is paid for cost of the work plus a fee up to a GMP. The contractor bears the risk of the GMP. And the final step is to close out the project. After the project is complete, there is an opportunity to share or fully recover cost savings depending on contract provisions. So here's the benefits of this delivery method. Fosters innovation, allows flexibility, improves cost control and certainty. and certainty, fewer change orders and overruns, higher design quality, reduces risk, optimizes program budget and schedule, enhances collaboration, upfront value engineering, improves constructability, improves transparency and accountability, and an opportunity to share or fully recover cost savings. So a resolution is required to approve alternative contracting methods, and staff recommends approval of the three methods presented for the town hall expansion project. Questions?
Great. So we'll start over to my right. Councilman Rivera, any questions on this?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Ekstrom, have we used anything like this in the past, sir?
Yeah. Um, all six building projects, um, starting with Field House, Police Station, Peewalk, Rec Center Expansion, Discovery Park, uh, they were all delivered using this delivery method.
Absolutely. Excellent. And, and you feel this is the best, in your professional opinion, you feel this is, this gives the citizens of Parker the best bang for its buck? Protects their investment?
Yes, I do.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, so we met this afternoon discussing this issue, and I expressed my concern over the cost that's already being proposed, and the fact that I personally don't support that level of expenditure. So what would be the minimum level of expenditure you would propose to follow these different methods?
So this really would just commit us to pre-construction fees, um, which I believe are about, uh, I forget in my staff report. Um, I think I identified a range in my staff report what the pre-con fees would be. Um, but that's the only commitment that, that this method would commit us to.
And do you suggest that we as a group come to final fruition on our concepts of what we're willing to expend?
Um, that will come, yeah, eventually. After we get a team-
We're going to commit already to design fees, right?
Pardon?
We're already going to commit to the design fees?
Um, in steps. So once the architect is selected, uh, we would contract for step one, which would be programming, concept, and, uh, schematic design. And we would stop there, and then bring that back to council, and, uh, probably in a study session, and show you the results of that. And at that point, we would be asking approval to take the next step of design.
Do you think it'd be more cost-effective to have a better idea where we're really going first?
Well, there is a, there is a target budget identified in the facility master plan, so that's the starting point.
But that hasn't even been voted on at this point. So that's kind of where I'm going, is I'm not sure we have full consensus on where we're going with the end budget and what we really want to do. So I'm wondering if we start going back to that and getting that done before you go out for this next concept, next phase.
Michelle, do you want to weigh in on that?
Um, well, if you recall, it was a couple of meetings ago, you all approved the facility master plan, which lays out, um, some of those steps. And as we mentioned then, these are going to be the different pieces that are going to be coming to you under this proposal.
But there were steps within that master plan that I thought we were going to be going a little further into over the remodeling and what was, what are we really going to do for an addition? I don't have any of that.
Which will be coming with the architect and all of those other pieces, because in-house we aren't able to do that. We don't have those skills or that expertise to be able to do that, or the workload, really, the capacity.
Well, if we're giving them a cap budget of 54 million, I can't go there.
So let me, hang on, Michelle. Let's, let's get through the questions, and then we'll do this during comment period. Just, but hang on to those comments. Okay. Councilmember Dag, any questions?
Thank you very much. Uh, no, it's just more of a, a reprise of our study session. I think my only outstanding question was, um, uh, sharing, uh, sharing cost savings. I think, um, uh, there was an assertion or a, a statement, um, made that it's, it's typical. Uh, you know, the only, the only experience I had, quite honestly, was, was in the E470 world, which isn't, it's a roadway. It's not a, it's not a vertical construction. Um, I, I went back and asked. I got down in the weeds a little bit, but in sum, um, within that process, there is, um, there is after mutual agreement on a proposal and a cost, uh, some ability to, to share back. So to me, I, I think I've, I've, um, I've come to terms with, with that part of my, uh, my outstanding issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'll save my time for comments.
Okay. Councilmember Hefta?
Um, yes, if, if you could, Mr. Ekstrom, just comment on the cost plus fee up to a guaranteed maximum. Again, just the benefits of that.
Sure.
So that's a compensation method. Um, so lump sum is a compensation method, unit price is a compensation method. Um, GMP is typ- is, is typically paired with a CMGC delivery. Um, the contractor commits to a GMP at the end of, at the end of the design. Um, and they bear the risk of that GMP. So it's, it really is what it says it is. It's a guaranteed maximum price.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right. So at this point, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:14. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on this resolution? Seeing none. Chris, anybody online?
Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment? Raise your hand. There is not.
Great. Thank you. We'll close public comment at 8:14, bring it back to the council for final comments and debate. Councilman Rivera, I want to start with you.
Thank you. Um, well done. Again, um, I appreciate using your expertise, um, past experiences that have shown success with your organization in this town, with your department, Mr. Williams, um, to create some of the best municipal buildings I've seen, and, and very, very proud as a citizen to, to occupy. Um, this is the same pattern that we're going to use for this crown jewel, the, the citizens' town hall. I, I am absolutely in favor. So well done again by the team.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I'm in favor of the method you're proposing. I am objecting at this point to starting with a 54 million price tag upfront, when we haven't really decided, I don't feel, what we really want to put into this and what we want to do. And I understand, you know, that you want to get some outside information and consulting to start with. That's fine. That's not a part of this process, or is it?
It is a part of the process, yeah.
So that, that's the concern I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Dag?
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I mean, to me, this is, uh, this is a question about methods, additional methods that our staff can use to, um, to, to build, build facilities within a plan that we, we approved. Um, I think through the, through the process and through working alongside collaboratively with, uh, with consultants, contractors, I, I think we will be able to, uh, squeeze out, um, uh, some cost savings through, uh, asking and answering questions and reducing and eliminating uncertainties as best as we can to, uh, to provide, uh, the best cost, if you will. I think in the future, we will, we will arrive at milestones which, uh, we can revisit, uh, approach and ways to, um, I guess, utilize or enhance the, the internal innards, if you will, of, of the building, and, and how, how they would, um, they would help staff. And I think that's, that's a part of this process. So, um, happy to, uh, support this. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
Well, my computer just died, but, um, I think these, the methods have been tried and true to several other town facilities. So I, I think that I'm in support of this also. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I just would like to note that, um, this method is the industry standard, and our staff has successfully and previously utilized this contracting method on the Field House, the Police Station, our Art Center, our Public Works, our Recreation Center Expansion, and the Discovery Park projects. So I support, again, using this contracting method. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council. With that, I will entertain a motion on resolution number 22-018.
I move to approve resolution number 22-018.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Dag. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dag?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is contracts over 50, or 500, I'm moving the zero around there, $500,000, Dransfeld Road Extension, CAP 23-001 on final design. Mr. Hudson?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, tonight I'm here to talk to you about Dransfeld Road Extension over Cherry Creek to Motzenbacher. This has been a component of the town's long-term roadway plan for over two decades now. A portion of the roadway is located unincorporated Douglas County, and we've started our partnership with Douglas County for this project. We'll talk a little bit more about it in a second. That goes on through several IGA amendments to get to where we are today. And we need to get Douglas County's support on this because there's unincorporated Douglas County that this road's going to go through. It's currently unincorporated Douglas County. The property owner is looking to annex this year if all goes through plan. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map. You've seen it before. This is the Dransfeld Extension south of 20 Mile, crossing Cherry Creek and tying in back over by the town's Salisbury North property. The project also includes a realignment and improvement of Motzenbacher Road from Longland Drive, which is Salisbury Heights north of Todd Drive. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go into all this, but, uh, the original IGA for this was 2019. We've had three amendments. The third amendment just got approved last Tuesday with, by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Um, we also had a profile and grade ordinance that you guys approved back in January of this year. This IGA amendment that got approved last week by the county commissioners allowed for continued use of consultants. Next slide, please. We've had multiple contracts with RSNH to get to this point. Um, this is the final design contract. As we make this push to get this thing to be ready to bid next year so that we can start construction sometime in 2023, this construction will go into 2024. Um, and we have to hit this design timeline today to be able to start construction next year. You'll ask yourself, boy, that's a lot of money. Yeah, it is. We're looking at a $20 million construction project is what we're looking at right now. This is about, when you add up all the RSNH, RSNH contracts, it's about seven and a half percent of a $20 million construction project. That's very much in line with what you should expect to pay for consultants for this type of work. Next slide, please. And with that, that's the contract tonight, 900 and some thousand dollars. I have to look at it again. 941,013 dollars. Um, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Great. Let's start. Councilman Dag?
Uh, the only questions were answered in the slide, Chris. You, you gave us to complete a report. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, this is primarily, funding for this is coming from governmental entities, correct?
Correct. Us in Douglas County.
Is there a reason why normally when you put through this, you know, road to support development, that the developers are not part of this contribution?
So you're going to see their contributions come forward with the annexation agreements. Um, we haven't worked out those details yet, but one of the things we do in engineering and public works, we want development to pay its way. So we've been already talking with the property owner about paying for Dransfeld Road along the commercial development that will happen to the south side of 20 Mile Road. Um, and you get to the south side of, uh, south of Cherry Creek, we're the property owner. So we're responsible. And then there's also some property on what I call inside the curve there by today's nursery. That's not in the town yet, and that property owner isn't even talking to us yet, to us yet about development of that property. But we will be talking to them when they come forward about paying for the road. Development has to pay its way. It's the way it's always been, and it has to continue here in the town.
What do you anticipate as the final cost of this entire effort?
$20 million is the construction budget.
Okay, overall, that's it?
That's what we're, right now, we're projecting based on the last estimate that I got is $20 million. And we're seeing escalating costs, Cheryl. Um, it is, the inflation that we're seeing right now in the construction industry is crazy. The sooner we can get this thing out for bid, the better. Um, I don't pray for recession sometimes, but maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing. So.
Okay. Well, you know, I just wanted to make sure we had the developers at some point participating in the project. Thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. Um, sorry. Got me there, Chris. Um, just an update from, from FEMA, from the clomer. Any, any update? Are we moving along? I mean, it's very important that we maintain our pace, but how are they doing?
Yeah, so we submitted the conditional letter of map revision on March 31st. Um, I tried to call Joe Biden, but he didn't take my call. It, it goes to the federal government, and it's, uh, it goes into a, um, a, a bit of a black hole. Um, we do have a good thing going for us is that Mile High Flight Control District is now reviewing Clomers for FEMA in the Denver metro area. We do have a personal relationship with the team over there. Um, we know they've got it, but again, it's like fine wine. It just takes time. So, uh, be patient. Um, I've been telling everybody at least six months, probably more, more like a year before we'll get an official. And so that's why we have to start pushing on final design to bring this all together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, council. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on that? Come on down.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Smith. I live at 11321 Dransfeld Road, which is the property where the Dransfeld Extrent, Extension will cross, or farm there. And over the years, as Chris says, 20 years, but the last five years real aggressively, we've been working on this project. And you might say we've crossed a lot of, a lot of bridges to build a bridge. Okay? So, and it's, as right now, the, we are working on annexation into the town. We've been working with Bryce Matthews of the Planning Department. We got our annexation agreement about halfway written up, and we got the legal surveys and all of that prepared, and so we're halfway there to get to presenting the package. And if everything goes right, we'll have the annexation finished before the end of the year. So hopefully that happens. And like all of the other little projects that we got going in the town, it's another transportation improvement project. And with the influx of rooftops comes necessary for infrastructure improvements, you know? And this is going to be a good one, I believe, that we're happy to be part of. So as far as we're concerned, it's, it's all good to go. And let's just hope the clomer from the feds come back soon, and we can get started.
Great. Thanks, sir. Chris, anybody online for public comments?
Um, there, there is one person, Kenneth Ramsey.
All right.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you if you will, uh, state your name and address for the record on this topic, and then I'll start your timer for you.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live at 3862 Allen Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134.
Great, go ahead.
Okay, I just, uh, I see this, the plan is to go across Cherry Creek. And of course, Cherry Creek is a heavily used wildlife quarter. And in addition, I wonder, you know, what's going to happen to whatever wildlife habitat we have to cross? Will the pure dog ordinance be any good for that? Or, you know, what's going to happen to wildlife and wildlife habitat going down through this project? That's my issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Chris?
No, there's not.
Okay, so we'll go, close at 8:27. Council will bring it back to you. Chris, unless you want to make any comment on?
Uh, regarding the question wildlife, we're going to have the longest bridge we have in Parker crossing this location, over 700 feet in length. Um, we also have a threatened- in Parker crossing this location, over 700 feet in length. We also have a threatened species called the pebble's jumping mouse. So we're talking with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to build this project. Because of all the other federal permits that are required, CLOMER just being one of them, we are talking with people. Not aware of any prairie dogs on the property. We will be doing an inventory of what's out there. I will say on the town's Salisbury North property, there's no prairie dogs I'm aware of. But I couldn't tell you on the north side of the property where the Mike Smith property is at.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Comments and debate. Councilmember Hefta, we'll let you start us off.
I just want to say thank you, Chris, to you for all your hard work and continued hard work on this project. And also, Mr. Williams, your department, for sticking with it and making sure this indeed does happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
Just thank you. Great job.
Great. Councilman Dyak?
No, appreciate the contract. I'm very supportive of it. Again, thank you again to our county commissioners for partnering with the town. Thank you to citizens such as Mr. Smith for allowing us to have this conversation to improve our transportation network and, you know, hopefully good things come of it. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I would also like to echo, you know, the thank yous, but I think that, to me, it's Mr. Smith, who, while he has something to gain, he has supported this project for many years, and I want to thank him for it.
Great. And Councilman Rivero.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, a topic of discussion tonight, but you pointed out very much the important part of this, and it is the network and it's an alternate route to Parker Road. Again, just like the previous Lincoln Project, this has been identified for many, many, many years. And the partnership with Douglas County is truly appreciated. And their understanding of this bridge, allowing our citizens on the southwest corner of town to be able to easily access their core area of the community is hugely important and giving them an alternate route to Parker Road. So we've got to keep the pace. We've got to keep the steps going. And this is one in a long line, but I think we're doing good things. Thank you.
Excellent. With that, I will entertain a motion on the staff's recommendation on contracts over $500,000.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as a part of the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilman, sorry, Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. With that, I will entertain a motion on adjourning.
I will move that we adjourn the meeting for May 2.
Great. And motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta. We are adjourned at 8:31.